All right, it's 10 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and start. This hearing of the Subcommittee on General Farm Commodities and Risk Management is to discuss the future CFTC. The Commission perspectives will come to order. Good morning. I'd like to welcome all of you to the second in a series of ag committee hearings on the future of the CFTC. Today's hearing builds on the perspective shared at the full committee hearing in May. I'm pleased to welcome Commissioners Scott O'Malley and Mark Wiegand to share their perspectives on what works at the Commission and what doesn't, assuming there isn't anything that doesn't work over there. But thank you both for being with us this morning. I look forward to your perspectives. About five years ago, America was watching in horror as the financial services industry imploded, draining trillions of dollars from their investment portfolios and retirement plans. In response, Congress passed the Dodd-Frank Act, requiring financial regulators to look deeper into the markets that they oversee. In many ways, Dodd-Frank fundamentally changed the regulators as much as it sought to remake the financial markets themselves. Congress mandated a staggering amount of work for the CFTC to get done, and it's transformed the Commission, conferring vast new registration, reporting, and oversight powers to it. The Commission has spent the past three years on this Herculean task, but today, it is still frustratingly behind schedule on some of those. Rulemakings that were supposed to be completed in a year have slipped into the third year. But perhaps more concerning has been the pattern of 11,000 delays of unworkable rules or guidance. The confusion and delays stemming from the Commission's actions are adding up to real costs for market participants. Many companies are in limbo, unsure of how to plan for the impact of the rules that might change. Every hearing, I remark that getting Dodd-Frank done correctly is more important than getting it done quickly. But the Commission seems to be failing at both, unable to complete its work correctly or expeditiously. A good example of a rule that I am concerned about, and one that we will get into further in the weeks to come, is the Customer Protection Rule that the Commission has recently proposed. The proposed rule will require futures commissions' merchants to hold additional margin and capital to cover all potential shortfalls by customers. This proposal would be expensive to implement and could harm the very customers it seeks to help by raising costs and reducing market competition. Proposed last November, this rule is not ready, and it's caused needless concern among smaller market participants who would bear the brunt and the greatest burdens in complying with this rule. The Commission must do a better job seeking and considering objective data at the front end of rulemaking, which is why Ranking Member Scott and I have introduced legislation to require the CFTC to conduct an actual analysis of costs and benefits when it proposes new rules. I hope that Commissioners O'Malley and Wiegand can testify about additional ways they believe the internal processes and the culture at the Commission can be improved. I look forward to a fruitful discussion on how to make sure that rulemaking process at the CFTC is coherent and transparent, and how to ensure the Commission's future actions are timelier and better prepared. Finally, as we look at options for how to improve the CFTC, we cannot forget to look closely at congressional mandates for reports, actions, offices, and other requirements on the Commission that may have outdated or may be outdated or redundant because of newer requirements. I firmly believe that repealing outdated sections of law is just as important as implementing new ones. With that, I'd like to again thank both Commissioners O'Malley and Wiegand. It's critical that the committee have your perspectives on what is working at the Commission and what's not. Your time appearing today and the time you've spent preparing over the past several weeks is much appreciated by David and myself. Now, I'd like to turn to my partner, Subcommittee Ranking Member David Scott, for his opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly to you, Mr. Wiegand and Mr. O'Malley. We certainly appreciate your coming here. Today's hearing is an especially important one, but it's not only important just to hear about the workings of the CFTC, but about you as an agency, about your budget, about your appropriations, about your needs. Your last appropriation was five years ago. So much has been thrown at you over the last five years. We've had the financial crisis, meltdown of Wall Street. We've had to come up with answers to that. We've had the birth and the implementation three years ago of Dodd-Frank. You've had to come up with that. We've had an ever-growing derivatives market now that is valued at $637 trillion, a piece of the world's economy. You've had to have rules for that. So you've had a lot thrown at you. You've done a very good job, and it's important, Mr. Chairman, that as we look at this three-year anniversary of Dodd-Frank, it's important to note that the CFTC has gone from what was once a sort of an obscure, parochial regulatory body to now one of the most powerful governmental agencies in the world. And the task that we in Congress gave them was not an easy one, but they have done so and have done an extraordinary job and yeoman's work, and not just this Commission, but their staff. I know, and it has to be, that the workload of this staff has probably quadrupled with what we have had. So it is very important that we hear from you to make sure that you, as your budget is about to expire in the next nine weeks or so, that we hear from you to know exactly what your needs are, because we, this Subcommittee, certainly wants to make sure that you have the funding that you are needed, that you have the technology that you've needed. We can sit here and make these laws across border and push out and handling all of these derivatives, but we have to depend upon you to tell us, "Congress, you want us to do this job? You want us to do it right. Here is what we need to do it, and here is why." I think that's very important to get across in this hearing today. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll yield back the balance of my time.
All right. Thank you, David. Appreciate that. We now, it's my honor to welcome the panel of witnesses to the table today. We've got Mr. Scott O'Malley, Commissioner, U.S. Commodities Futures Trading Commission, Washington, D.C., and the Honorable Mark Wiegand, Commissioner, U.S. Commodities Futures Trading Commission, Washington, D.C. So, Mr. O'Malley, we've got both of your written statements for the record, but please visit with us about the things that you think are the most important out of your written testimony. So with that, Mark, Scott, I mean, you've got the floor.
Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of this Subcommittee, I'm pleased to be invited here today to discuss the CFTC's implementation of Dodd-Frank. I'm also pleased to be able to participate in this hearing and joined by my fellow Commissioner and colleague, Commissioner Mark Wiegand. In summarizing my testimony, I will focus on three main topics. First, I'd like to discuss the challenges the end-users face as a result of the Commission's approach to implementation of Dodd-Frank. Second, I'll discuss the serious concerns I have with the Commission's rulemaking process. And finally, I will discuss the challenges, the Commission, data utilization, and the importance of technology in meeting the expanded mission. Even a brief review of the legislative history of the Dodd-Frank Act demonstrated that it was Congress's intent to protect commercial end-users from Dodd-Frank's expansive regulatory reach. The swap dealer rule is a good example of the Commission's failure to accurately interpret Dodd-Frank. The rules make it unnecessarily difficult to determine whether an entity is a swap dealer or an end-user. It broadly applies the swap dealer definition to all market participants and ignores the statutory mandate to exclude end-users. Rather than providing a bright-line test or expressly excluding end-users, the rule lists numerous factors that should be considered in determining whether an end-user's commercial activity might be dealing. As a result, end-users have shied away from the ambiguous facts and circumstances test, and have instead relied on provisions that excuses a dealer from registration from the Commission if its aggregate dealing activity is below an $8 billion de minimis threshold, which is an arbitrary and not based on data. I would encourage Congress to exclude end-users from the dealer definition. In the alternative, Congress should also consider allowing commercial entities not to count their cleared swaps as part of their $8 billion de minimis calculation. Another area that deserves Congressional attention is the customer protection and bankruptcy. The importance of these issues is emphasized by the recent cases involving the blatant misuse of customer funds by FCMs. In 2010, MF Global misappropriated over $900 million to cover its own proprietary losses. One year later, Peregrine Financial and its founder, Russell Losendorf, stole over $200 million in customer funds. Both the industry and the Commission have taken steps to increase the level of protection to prevent something like this from happening again. It is inexcusable for these FCMs failed, it is inexcusable that these FCMs fail to protect customer funds. Although these violations were not because of a lack of regulation, I believe there is room for improvement. As I explain in more detail in my written testimony, I believe that Congress should consider improving customer protections in bankruptcy. First, I believe customers will benefit from an increased CFTC authority and the insolvency by appointing a CFTC trustee to look out for futures and swapped customers. Second, Congress must ensure that customers are always first in line in any distribution of assets of an estate in a bankruptcy. Third, the Congress should revisit the prorouted distribution rules, including creating the ability of third-party segregation accounts that will not be commingled in bankruptcy. Another area that needs improvement is the Commission's own rulemaking processes. I think that everyone would agree that it is virtually impossible to achieve good policy outcomes without establishing sound process for reaching these outcomes. The CFTC staff has issued an unprecedented number of no-action letters. So far, the staff has issued over 100 letters, including 24 letters that provide indefinite relief from hastily drafted rules. No-action letters are not voted on by the Commission. They are not published in the Federal Register and do not include notice and comment periods. Thus, no-action letters should be used on a very limited basis. I've always advocated for all the Commission's rulemakings must include a thorough cost-benefit analysis, both qualitative and quantitative, to ensure that our rules do not impose unreasonable costs. However, the cost-benefit provisions in the CEA do not currently require quantitative analysis. Thus, I'm pleased that the House has passed the cost-benefit reform bill, requiring the Commission to conduct quantitative analysis to justify the cost of its rules relative to its benefits. In considering the Commission's reauthorization, it is entirely appropriate for Congress to review the Commission's internal procedures for compliance with the APA and insist on reforms to the Commission's cost-benefit analysis. It is also imperative for the Commission to better utilize technology, given the Commission's expanded oversight responsibilities. Since the beginning of 2013, certain market participants have been required to report their data to an SDR. Unfortunately, the Commission has struggled with analyzing this information. Earlier this spring, our surveillance staff admitted that they could not spot the London Whale trades in the current CFTC data. Solving our data dilemma must be the Commission's top priority. As the Chairman of the Commission's Technology Advisory Committee, I have formed a working group comprised of CFTC staff and various market participants, including the SDRs, to resolve this problem as soon as possible. The Commission has been given the momentous task of creating a regulatory environment that increases transparency and improves stability in our financial markets. Therefore, the Commission must faithfully implement the statute in a consistent, clear, and cost-effective manner. This Committee has every right and responsibility to make the necessary and immediate changes it deems fit. I'm happy to continue to work with this Committee to ensure that the operating and the Commission's operating is authorized and mandated under the CEA. I'm happy to answer any questions you have following our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mark?
Good morning, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for inviting me to testify this morning and share some of my perspectives on the future of the Commodity Futures Trading Commission. It is a pleasure to be here. I want to personally thank Chairman Conway for his keen interest in our agency and his open dialogue with me since I joined the Commission. I have found our discussions to be useful and hopefully mutually beneficial. I also want to acknowledge my friend, Commissioner O'Malley, who is beside me today. I have admired his skills in analyzing and bringing attention to important issues raised by our rules or other market developments. I hope he would agree that we have developed a good working partnership at the Agency. For a host of reasons, now is a very good time for not only this Subcommittee, but all stakeholders in the CFTC, to reflect on what the future might bring for this Agency. Allow me to mention a few. First, and most obviously, Congress must address the expiring authorization for the Agency, which is the primary reason for the hearing today, and of course, will require a Congressional response. I appreciate the Subcommittee's efforts to work toward making that response an informed one that seeks to solve any inadequacies or other problems related to the Commodity Exchange Act or the work of the Commission. It is my hope and belief that many of the issues raised by the CFTC rulemakings in the past three years that eventually became the subject of Congressional legislation have been resolved or adequately addressed in our final rules or through other relief granted by the Agency. With or without additional direction from Congress through CFTC reauthorization, it is important that the Agency and its staff continue to find ways to address problems that are still in need of a solution. Second, the Commission's implementation of Title VII of Dodd-Frank is, for the most part, finished. We have almost 80 swap dealers now registered with the CFTC, clearing mandates in place for a broad swath of the swap market, and new reporting obligations for market participants. The Commission also just completed its cross-border guidance, informing market participants and other regulators how the Commission's rules will be applied to activities and entities overseas. Looking ahead through the lens of what already has been done, the Commission and all stakeholders will need to closely monitor and, if appropriate, address the inevitable challenges that will come with implementing the new regulatory framework under Dodd-Frank. Third, while most of the Commission's work to implement Dodd-Frank is complete, there remain important rulemakings and administrative matters in the months ahead. Perhaps most importantly, the Commission, along with the Federal Reserve, the OCC, the FDIC, and the SEC, must finalize its rulemaking on the so-called Volcker Rule. The Agency also must undertake substituted compliance determinations under the recently finalized cross-border guidance. This will involve a review of swap regulatory regimes in other nations to determine whether they are comparable and comprehensive or essentially identical to U.S. law. The Commission also must finalize its rulemaking on capital and margin requirements for uncleared swaps, and there are two very important rulemakings related to the international harmonization of risk management requirements on clearinghouses, which dovetails with the substituted compliance Another critical rulemaking, albeit not directly related to Dodd-Frank, is the Commission's Customer Protection Rule that seeks to improve risk management practices at futures commission merchants. Finally, given that the U.S. has nearly delivered on its G20 commitments to derivatives reform, and the European Union is close behind, all of us can spend more time focusing on the developing market structure for swaps on a more global scale. The Commission already has authorized new trading platforms for swaps, and Europe is about to do the same. We anticipate that with these developments, many swaps will be executed on regulated and transparent marketplaces located both here and abroad, facilitating global liquidity formation and risk management. Consistent with this result, I believe that the Commission's cross-border guidance reversed a developing trend toward market and risk management fragmentation that would have been counterproductive to the goals of Dodd-Frank as well as the G20 commitments. But we all must wait and see, to a greater degree, what developments will take shape outside of the U.S. and Europe. Other jurisdictions that host a substantial market for swap activity are still working on their reforms, and certainly will be informed by our work. All of us will need to monitor those developments closely, with an eye toward how they could separate those jurisdictions from the fabric we, along with our European partners, stitched together in last week's accord. In other words, the Commission must remain vigilant in monitoring, identifying, and addressing risk, and continually prioritize so we are focused on the greatest threats. Indeed, another threat identified by the Treasury Secretary two weeks ago must be part of this global monitoring, the cybersecurity threat. As marketplaces and systems continue to rely more and more on technology, the need to better understand and protect against cybersecurity threats increases. There are multiple task forces and coalitions formed of domestic and international partners that the Commission will need to work with to ensure success on this front. Thank you again for inviting me today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that. Chairman, I'd like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate our members' understanding. And with that, I'd like to recognize the Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Luke. Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the efforts of yourself and the ranking members as we proceed through this process. And I want to thank both of the Commissioners for testifying today. The topic of CFTC reauthorization is a very important one, and this is the Committee's second hearing on the issue. Tomorrow, we'll continue the process and hear directly from end-users. I expect the Committee to move forward with CFTC reauthorization as the farm bill also progresses. Now, a couple of issues confronting us. In light of the confusion surrounding the exemptive order and final guidance that has been circulated to regulate cross-border swap transactions, how can institutions be sure they are correctly interpreting these policies? And can either of you comment on whether the Commission will give some degree of deference to American firms as they implement the hundreds of pages of new guidelines, gentlemen? to American firms as they implement the hundreds of pages of new guidelines, gentlemen?
Thank you for the question. Very good question, and it is a challenge as we’ve—the guidance has been out less than a week, and people are beginning to digest it, and I’m trying to understand and make sense of it and understand where their activities fall. It’s complicated, depending on your organizational structure, et cetera. So I think we have to give an appropriate deference to people trying to comply with the rules. This is not dissimilar from any of the other kind of complex rulemakings, including the swap dealer definition. And so we’ve always had to have a limit, some latitude, to provide people the coordination and convenience to comply with the rules. And we have to respond to their questions as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the question. I agree with Commissioner O’Malia. There is—I think what you might be referring to is a provision that was in the exemptive order that expired that was not retained in the new exemptive order, and it had to do with basically a statement of fact, as I see it, and that was that we expect good-faith compliance at the Agency during this unusual time of implementation of our rules and compliance—initial compliance with our rules. And so while the new exemptive order did not retain that provision, as I said, I believe it’s a statement of fact. So we’re going to have to continue working with all market participants. I’m sure a number of questions will come up. Some have already materialized in the last week or so, and I’m sure others will come up as well, and so we’ll just have to keep working with market participants and sorting out some of these issues.
Commissioner O’Malia, I was very troubled to read in your testimony that the Commission’s staff may now be initiating enforcement actions outside of the Commission vote process. Is this a new change in policy, or has it been done before?
Thank you for the question. It’s relatively new change. The issue that I raised, the Commission under Dodd-Frank has issued a number of broad omnibus orders to initiate oversight or undertake subpoena authority. Now, these broad authorities don’t identify a specific practice in mind, but they are seeking approval from the Commission to issue subpoenas in a scope of law that they believe that they have concerns about. Now, we’ve provided these omnibus orders in the past, and they’re generally time-limited. And I’ve had some concerns about that because I think the Commission’s authority to approve the rule and to approve the initiation of an omnibus order and subpoena is fundamental to the Commission’s responsibility. It’s not something that should be delegated to staff. And in fact, Commission Regulation 11.4 requires Commission action to take these orders. Now, the recent activity has—there’s two things that have occurred. One, they’ve asked for absent objection, meaning that it’s a staff action. When I asked our General Counsel if the Commission could overrule an absent objection standard, he said, “No, it is not a Commission action. Therefore, it does not fall within our authority under 11.4 for the Commission to initiate these type of investigations.” So I believe this is a kind of a slippery slope we’re headed down, and it’s a concern of mine that we not delegate too much authority to staff, especially with new authority under Dodd-Frank. I think there are a lot of areas here that are not explored. Think about the new manipulation authority. We have a new recklessness standard. We need to be thinking about these and how they will be interpreted by the market.
I absolutely agree, and I suggest that whatever we have to do to preserve the check-and-balance system that Congress envisioned when it created the five-member Commission is absolutely necessary. The requirement for a vote on key actions should not be disregarded under some guise of efficient government, which is a paradox, if I’ve ever heard of one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You back my seconds.
Gentlemen, yells back two seconds. Mr. Scott, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with you, Commissioner Witten. Do you have sufficient staff to accomplish the tasks that you all have been given?
Thank you, Congressman Scott, for that question. I believe the answer is no. As we all know and as we discussed in our opening statements, the responsibilities of our agency have increased dramatically in the past three years. We’re overseeing a market that we had very, very, very little oversight over before. It’s a massive market. There are, as I said in my statement, close to 80 registrants now registered as swap dealers. So there’s no doubt our responsibilities have been magnified, and we need the resources to do the job and to meet out these new responsibilities. And here’s the main reason for it. And it’s especially true now, I think, that we are mostly finished with finalizing the rules, but we’re at the beginning stage of the implementation process. And the reason why we need resources—or the most important reason in my mind—is during this new phase of implementation—and we’ve already seen it, we’ve already talked about it this morning—a number of questions are going to continue to come up. Market participants are going to have multiple interpretation questions. They’re going to need additional guidance from staff, in some cases, additional guidance from the Commission as a whole, and we need staff to be able to provide that. And the reason we need to do that is because, again, we’ve been in this process now three years. The markets need and deserve certainty, and the way that we provide certainty is by having the staff in our building that can get answers to market participants as quickly as possible.
And so, how much funding do you need? Your appropriations authorization runs out, as I said, in about nine weeks on September 30th. So this is very important that we move expeditiously to get you the funding that you need. Would you tell us how much that is?
Well, the budget request was a pretty significant increase over our current budget, as you know, Mr. Scott. I think the request was around $305 million.
And that would be about a 52% increase, is that correct?
I think that sounds right, yeah. And here’s how we came up with that number. The Chairman obviously manages this process, but in terms of the rest of us, who have to decide whether or not to support a budget request, the division heads within the Agency, they all make their case to us as to what they believe they need. And after going through that process and listening directly from them what their justification was for the request, I felt comfortable supporting the request and thought it was justified.
Very good. Just before I get to Mr. O’Malia, I’d like to just make mention for the committee that Chairman—back in February, Chairman Ginsler said, and I quote, “That budget cuts have caused the CFTC to shell, shell, some potential enforcement actions. This means cases that should have been investigated and/or prosecuted were passed over due to a lack of funds.” So I think it is very important, Mr. Chairman, that we make sure the record is clear that this agency needs the funding, that we’re asking them to do a job. Their workload has been overloaded. They’ve had burnout at staff. They’ve done a commendable job with the intelligence and the precision and the commitment and dedication, and so I think it is very important that we honor their requests going forward for this 52% increase. And I, for one, I think you’ll agree, will know that that is very important. I think I have one more minute here. Commissioner O’Malia, could I get your opinion on—you know, we just passed House Resolution 1256, and the two major parts of that were harmonization between you all and the SEC. I’d like to ask you to comment very briefly on where that is, how that is coming along, and then the second part, the making sure that those nine major economies that we have to deal with have regimes that are equal to ours of enforcement.
Well, that’s a very important and timely question. The harmonization effort—we’ve struggled in that, frankly. We now have an agency—our agency has put forward a definition of cross-border definition that is not consistent with the SEC definition. We are on a different time scale, and we’ve used a different process. They’ve used a regulation. We’ve relied on guidance, and I have some very serious concerns about relying on guidance in and of itself. When I asked our General Counsel, “How do we bring enforcement under guidance?” He said it does not have the force of law that would require under regulation, would be provided under regulation. So I am frustrated with the lack of coordination between the SEC and the CFTC. I think it’s almost comical that we would have two agencies coming up with a different definition of U.S. person. So that’s problematic in and of itself. Your question about how we were going to find substituted compliance with regard to the other non-regulatory regimes is really what’s important and what is the focus of the Commission efforts right now. We passed an exemptive order that provides until the end of December, right before Christmas, relief that will expire and will be back in the same situation of up against an artificial deadline. But in that time, between now and then, we have to determine and do an evaluation of all of these different jurisdictions for the comparability, and do they match with ours? And that will be a tough situation, and it’s not easy because it’s a lot of details we’re going to have to go through. Our rule does say—or our guidance does say—we will consider it on an outcomes basis, but I’m skeptical that that will really be applied, actually, when the staff goes through and does an evaluation. Harmonization is vital if we’re going to make this work effectively, and we cannot unilaterally dictate our rules to the rest of the world.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that extra minute.
All right. Recognize myself for five minutes. Scott, you mentioned in your testimony the cost-benefit issue and the controversy that we’ve had running with the Commission most throughout most of the Dodd-Frank era in terms of our—least my dissatisfaction with the level of attention that was paid to that issue. Can you talk to us a little bit about—with the bill that we’ve passed through the House, if you implemented it—and Mark would like you to weigh in as too—if we implemented that bill itself, would that put the Commission on a proper footing with respect to how it would have to analyze the impact that potential regulations had on those who are regulated and in compliance with that?
I think that bill would be a vast improvement over the current standards we have under the CEA in 15A. I think in the recent ICI case, the District Court found that the Commission—which the defendants complained that our standard wasn’t very high, and the judge affirmed it, it was not a very high standard, and we do not have to do a quantitative and qualitative analysis necessary to justify the costs and the benefits. So I think implementation and passage of the cost-benefit rule that you have sponsored in the House has passed would be a vast improvement for our Commission and would require us to do a much more rigorous evaluation of the rules.
Mark, thoughts?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that Commissioner O’Malia has been a real leader at our agency on this topic. He’s been very effective at keeping the agency and the agency staff focused on this provision in our statute. Of course, I’m referring to Section 15A, which is a current requirement that we take into account the costs and benefits of our provisions in a rulemaking. And I have to say, since I’ve been at the Commission—it’s almost two years now—I’ve seen a real commitment to 15A and to making sure that it’s being dispensed with appropriately. And Scott mentioned the ICI legislation. That’s one view to take of that—I said legislation, litigation. That’s one view to take of the litigation. But what was more important to me from the litigation is the fact that both the District Court and appellate court have found that we are, again, abiding by the current requirements of the Commodity Exchange Act with respect to Section 15A. I’m always happy to explore ways to improve. Mr. Chairman, you and I have had some initial discussions about that. I’m happy to continue those, but for now, I think it’s important to point out that, at least in the time I’ve been at the Commission, we’ve done, in my judgment, satisfactory job on this front.
Right. I appreciate the perspective. I need to correct the record. David and I, the bill is only passed out of committee with a voice vote. We’re still here, we’ve got to get across the floor. I guess one of the things that we are asking industry is to look at the effectiveness of the cost-benefit analysis that was done on many of the Dodd-Frank rules now that they have some perspective in actually having to implement and how much it’s actually costing them versus what the Commission on the front end said. And so we’ll have a bit of, hopefully, empirical evidence to show that whatever was done—again, this is a prospective change, we’re not going to go back and redo anything—but that whatever the impact that the costs affected, the regulation that was chosen by the Commission in order to put in place, were those costs rational at the time you were making your decision? And I think all of us make better decisions with better information. So we’ll have a bit of empirical, hopefully, some empirical evidence on what the Commission thought it would cost to implement many of these regulations when you were doing it versus what the industry and the folks who are having to comply with those have actually had to invest in making that happen. So the—and I don’t want to run over, but can you talk to us a bit about the pervasive use of no-action letters? And just walk us through mechanically how that happens, and is there a way to improve that process so that either you need fewer of them or you can issue them in a more timely basis, and what impact do they actually have?
I think no-action is an important tool for the Commission to provide very selective, narrowly crafted relief to either a special entity or for a certain activity. And we’ve relied on it heavily in the past. We’ve relied on it in the past to provide these narrow exemptions. Now, I think what we’ve done in moving our rules forward, we’ve relied on it more heavily in order to provide relief from broad—from general timeframes and timelines that are unachievable by the industry. I think the poster child for kind of the no-action relief was for the special entities, for utility special entities. We called it a temporary relief until the Commission reevaluates the rules. Well, it’s—in October, it’ll be a full year. We have no intention of really going back to revisit that rule, which is the swap dealer definition. So I suspect we will not reopen that. So we’ve offered what fundamentally becomes indefinite relief. That, in fact, is a rulemaking. If you’re changing the Commission’s policies indefinitely, that turns out to be a rulemaking, and it did not have benefit of APA, notice and comment, and cost-benefit analysis. So I think in that instance, we really need to go back and really look at how we’re going to use this no-action process. And in my testimony, I suggest this is an area for the committee to really evaluate, to understand what our policies and procedures are and how we’re going to be using it.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Mr. Vargas, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak, and I also want to thank the witnesses here today. You’ve already testified a little bit about this, and that is the budget request, and my understanding is that it is, in fact, a 15.25% increase above the current year. I would like you to comment, though, more specifically about the IT factor of this, and it doesn’t matter who goes first, but I think that’s an important factor. Mr. O’Malia, I think you’d like to—you’re chomping at the bit. Why don’t you go first?
Well, I am because it’s—technology in the IT sector is really a passion of mine, and I’m very interested. And since arriving at the Commission, I’ve really put a lot of focus and attention on it. And my frustration with it is it’s always kind of a second-tier issue for us, and despite the kind of promise of investing in technology and making it a priority, consistently, we underfund it, and for the past two or three years, we’ve always taken $10 million out of the technology budget and shifted it over to staffing needs. And granted, there’s a balancing act here, but we are policing a 21st-century market with really 20th-century kind of surveillance tools. We need to do much more, to invest in technology, to really leverage our staffing needs. We could rely on less staffing if we’re able to automate our surveillance tools. And under Dodd-Frank, we have an enormous task ahead of us. We’ve required that everybody report all their trades and their data into a swap data repository. Our ability to look into that and evaluate and do the analysis on it is critically important if we’re going to be an effective regulator. And then we have to link it back to the futures market. There are no shortcuts with this. This is not eye shades and Excel spreadsheets. This is serious data crunching, and we’re going to need automation for it. So I’m very frustrated that we have not invested to our greatest capacity, and I think one of the areas where we need to focus is actually developing a budget that selects good priorities. And one area that I’ve advocated for is a division-by-division analysis of what our needs for the next five years are for technology. And I think this is something that the committee should ask for. Where do you want to be in five years as part of your reauthorization? Technology is a critical element, so how are we going to get there, and what tools are we going to need to get there? After you have that evaluation, then you and I can make real, serious decisions about funding levels and budget priorities. And until we develop that budget spend plan for you, we’re in the dark.
Mr. Witten, would you care to comment on that, or do you generally agree?
I do generally agree. This is another area where Commissioner O’Malia has been very vocal in his advocacy for additional resources to be targeted at IT investments at the Agency, and it’s—I think it’s a very non-controversial position for him to take. As I said in my opening statement, these markets are—participation in our markets are basically driven by technology and through technology, and so surveillance has to—in order to keep up, surveillance is also going to have And so surveillance has to, in order to keep up surveillance, is also going to have to rely heavily on it. There's always going to be an important component of human interface with the technology that's being deployed and used, but without a doubt, I agree, it is an area of improvement that we need to focus on at the agency.
I'd like to ask one last question. I only have a minute and 40 seconds. My question would be this, and that's the issue that a lot of people ask, is there over speculation in the futures, speculation in the commodities derivatives market in the sense that you see these radical price swings and market uncertainty, especially with issues of energy, gasoline? And I'd like to know if this is market forces, or you said you need serious data crunching to this technology. If we had this ability, do you think we could tell the American people that what you see in the cost of gasoline is, in fact, market prices and not some sort of speculation that's inappropriate? Because that's what Dodd-Frank and all this is supposed to do. Does anyone care to take a shot?
Thank you, Congressman. I think certainly monitoring the markets we oversee for speculative activity is important. It's part of what we do now. I'd like to point out that the Commission has a weekly surveillance meeting every Friday where we review and have the staff present any sorts of odd activity in the marketplace, any sorts of irregularities that they might be seeing. And it doesn't focus solely on energy commodities. It runs the whole range of asset classes. So I think first and foremost, that's what we need to do. We need to continue being very, very vigilant in regard to our surveillance activities. And Scott alluded to this, I just spoke about it as well, additional technology investments should help in that score. But I think we've done a pretty decent job of trying to keep tabs on true irregularities and--
Thank you. My time has concluded here, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The other, Mr. Scott from Georgia, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wijen, Commissioner O'Malley, you spoke of the need to have better coordination with the SEC on just some basic definitions. Do you agree with him on that?
There is a, I appreciate the question, Mr. Congressman. There is a provision in Dodd-Frank in Title VII that requires us to coordinate. Even absent a specific mandate to do a joint rule, we still have this obligation under the statute to coordinate as best we can. I think Scott would agree. He and I don't always see everything that's going on at the agency because we're just one of five commissioners, actually four at the moment. But I do think it's fair to say that there's a lot more going on behind the scenes than people realize. I think there's a lot of staff discussions taking place between the SEC and the CFTC. I think we could probably always do more. The one last thing I would add, Mr. Congressman, is that in the weeks leading up to the finalization of the guidance, I can assure you, I myself was having multiple conversations with SEC commissioners, high-level SEC officials. I was having multiple conversations with members of the European Commission, conversations with other agencies within the federal government that had an interest in what we're doing with the guidance. So I felt pretty good about the level of engagement I was able to get with my counterparts at these different regulatory bodies.
That kind of answered my next question as well, which was, do you believe that the SEC shares that desire to have uniform definitions? And certainly, I think that makes it easier from a compliance standpoint for those that are being regulated, as well as from a regulatory standpoint. If we can't even get to the agreement on what the definition of a person is, then how do we get to the definition of what a direct and significant impact on U.S. consumers is? And so that would lead to my next question, which is, the Act says it shall not apply to swap activities that do not have a direct and significant connection with activities in or affect on commerce in the United States. The definition of direct and significant, can you give us that?
So the question was, what, I think, the definition of direct and significant impact in U.S. commerce is? Well, the words obviously are somewhat plain and in many ways speak for themselves, but I'll tell you how I interpreted it. To me, what it meant was, when we designed our cross-border policy, we needed to ensure that the U.S. taxpayer was protected and the U.S. financial system was protected. The mandate was not to go too far in that effort, but at a minimum, we needed to be ensure that those two objectives were accomplished. And I think through the other provisions of the policy we adopted through the guidance, that will be the effect of our policy once it's implemented and once market participants comply with it.
Well, I know that there was some discussion of latitude to comply with the new rules, but again, if we don't have a definition of what direct and significant is, then how can somebody who is being regulated comply with that rule? And I would hope that direct and significant is another term that you're able to get a uniform agreement with the SEC on, because, I mean, look, simpler is better from the regulator's standpoint, and it's certainly better from the person who's trying to comply with the rules, just to keep up with one definition instead of multiple. But you do not have a feel for at what point the transactions are so de minimis that they would not be subject to the new regulations?
Well, under our guidance, here's the first way I would answer that question. Under our guidance, if there is an entity, even if it's offshore, but it has the benefit of a parental guarantee, or if it's a foreign branch of a U.S. bank, which case obviously would be offshore as well, the guidance provides that those entities, if they do the requisite level of swap dealing activity, they would need to register as swap dealers. And the policy behind that is, again, by virtue of the parental guarantee, or in the case of a foreign branch, the legal structure of the bank, the risk will come back to the United States, to the parent or to the home bank. And for that reason, the Commission decided that it was appropriate to ensure or to require registration, so long as the requisite amount of activity was actually taking place. Commissioner Malia referred to it earlier, we have this de minimis threshold, and for now, you have to deal more than $8 billion of swap dealing activity, in which, in that event, you have to register, but--
Sorry to interrupt. I'm down to about five seconds. I do hope that you'll continue to get the uniform definitions with the SEC and our overseas regulators as well, to just make it easier to regulate and for those other entities, the entities to comply with the regulations. With that, I yield back.
General, your time has expired. Mr. Maloney for five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, and I apologize for being absent for a moment. Thank you both for your service. Thank you for all the hard work you've done. I think it's often overlooked just how much has been going on in the CFTC, and I want to commend you both for that, and thank you for your appearance here today. My question to either of you, and be interested to hear your views, what happens on December 21st, you know, with respect to the interpretive guidance and the exemptive order if the Europeans aren't ready? Do you expect the Europeans to be ready, and if not, what happens?
Thank you for that question. I think it's a very important question because we faced a artificial deadline of July 12th a week ago, and now we're, or two weeks ago, now we're facing, we've created another artificial deadline, and this one, again, backed up right against the holidays. Of course, everybody will be intently focused on fixing it, but at the same time, we don't give ourselves much leeway in terms of being able to resolve it if it goes over. We were forced into an artificial deadline that created, I think, some flawed policy. We took shortcuts with the Administrative Procedures Act, which shouldn't be done with notice and comment. And I am very concerned that we will not have a process in place that will give careful evaluation to the substituted compliance regimes and make that determination and put in place a new regime to follow on to that. I've asked, at our open meeting two weeks ago, I asked the staff for their, what is the process for the substituted compliance determination? When will we make it? What information will we have about different regimes and what are the recommendations of staff? They were, the chairman actually directed staff at that meeting to provide, within two weeks, which will be this Friday, a process for the Commission to evaluate. I think this needs to be fully exposed to transparency, open meetings, allow for foreign entities to come defend their applications and talk to us directly, to the commissioners, not through a staff no action, not through sending emails or discussions that are not privy to all four of us, to have this open discussion and figure out where we have comparable rules and where we do not have comparable rules, and then how are we going to solve for the differences. So I look forward to having the process unveiled to us by the staff and how they're going to make this determination, so we can better figure out if we have enough time so we don't put ourselves in a situation like we had with July 12th.
Mr. Wijen.
Thank you, Congressman Maloney. I think the answer is that, in an ideal world, on December 21st, the CFTC staff will have, by then, made recommendations to the full Commission that those jurisdictions that have submitted applications for substitute compliance determinations, that's Canada, the European Union, Japan, Hong Kong, Australia, I think I'm forgetting one, but ideally, we will have recommendations from the staff, and as Commissioner O'Malley has said, we will be making full Commission determinations as to whether or not substitute compliance should be allowed for. I can see that's a fairly abbreviated timeframe, but I think it's one that was based on judgments made about how to make sure the process would be undertaken expeditiously. The date was also informed by input from these other foreign jurisdictions, and in some cases, they suggest dates in order to keep their own countries on task and focused on their own reform efforts. So that's the reason behind the date. It could turn out to be that it's overly aggressive, but we'll have to wait and see. But that's, it's not a totally irrational date, in other words.
Let me ask you with my remaining time, just an open-ended question to both of you. I'm very curious, if you just pulled the lens back, with all that's going on, with reauthorization still out there and these other issues, what is the thing that keeps you up at night? What's your biggest risk?
Some of our biggest risks are the lack of certainty in our rules. I think that's the biggest complicating factor, and while it keeps me up, I'm quite certain it keeps every commercial end-user, financial entity out there that are trying to comply with our rules on a regular basis, trying to do their jobs and to meet the obligations of these rules. What's frustrating about a swap dealer rule is you have to look towards position limits rules potentially and special clearing determinations and made available for trade determinations and figure out where you sit in the queue and all your responsibilities. It's extraordinarily complex, which means it makes it extraordinarily expensive to do your job. We have four or five different hedging definitions, depending on if you're trading as a swap dealer or you're not trading as a swap dealer, if you're trading on position limits or you're trading on a different entity. Four rules for hedging determination is insane. What's wrong with one? Why can't we treat it consistently? And that is something that I would encourage you to consider, because these are basic premise of what is hedging? And I think that's a very important thing for the Commission and the committee to look at.
I was going to respond by saying my three-year-old is what keeps me up most nights.
It doesn't change when they're 12, believe me.
Is that, I'm sorry to learn that. I think the thing that I worry most about is another incident where, because of gaps or failures in oversight, there's a failed firm and customer funds are lost. I think we've done a level, a very good job, in many ways, responding to that. We have a proposed rulemaking that we hope to finalize very, very soon. But there's always this fear that I have that we don't know what we don't know. And so while the reforms that have been recommended, I think, are going to be very, very good ones, it'd be best to feel like you're going to eliminate all risk as it relates to the loss of customer funds. And so if there's any one thing that I would identify, it's that. The other thing is what I mentioned in my statement, Mr. Congressman, I think there's this looming cybersecurity threat that people are trying to get their minds around more in recent years, and that's something that we're going to have to focus on more because there's a pretty significant vulnerability, I think, for our markets to these threats. And then the other thing is how the patchwork of global regulatory reforms takes shape and whether there are any gaps there. I mean, we have, we've already found, our agency has found, that the European regime is essentially identical, so that's a terrific first step, and that covers most of the swap activity around the globe. But there are some other jurisdictions where there's significant activity as well, and it's not clear what's going to happen there.
General, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Awafa, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For Commissioner O'Malley, first of all, thank you, General, for being here today. I had a little mini chuckle with Mr. Maloney's question, asking what happens December 21, and if this was a year ago, we'd be worried about my encounter. This year, I hope it's a lot less of a worry, so, anyway. We've been very attentive to the swap dealer situation such, and we wanted to cover, again, CFTC has had a $25 million special entity sub-threshold, which needs to be fixed as it relates to public power utilities. You've noted also that CFTC has provided a no-action letter, increasing the sub-threshold for certain transactions to $800 million, but the effect has been still to limit the pool of counterparties with which public power utilities can enter operations-related swaps, in turn, you know, concentrating the risk to fewer market participants, so, fewer participants. Because of these concerns, it's also expressed by power utilities, public utilities in my own district and throughout the whole country, myself and three of my colleagues, Mr. Denna, Mr. Costa, Mr. Garamendi, as well as many other cosponsors, we introduced H.R. 1038, the Public Power Risk Management Act. Also, Mr. Lutkemeyer, who sits on the House Banking Committee, was an original cosponsor as well. The bill's purpose is to put public power utilities back on an even playing field with the other utilities and hedging their risks, thus by exempting the operation-related swaps from their $25 million low sub-threshold, but giving them the same power to generate, to the, excuse me, to the general $8 billion threshold. So this, our act, our bill, was approved by this committee unanimously, thank you, members, as well as passed on the House floor by 423 to 0 on June 12. So first, to the commissioners, Mr. O'Malley, do you think this is the right approach that we've taken so far, since we've had maybe the first chance to talk to you about it? And second, is this an approach the CFTC would like to emulate itself? And would it take place anytime soon? Or does Congress need to move forward full speed ahead with this bill that we've already moved out of the House?
It's a great question and a great issue. I fully support your legislation, so thank you for that, and I hope the Senate will pass it so we can achieve the reform that I think is appropriate. I think this issue in and of itself, and here is the staff no-action letter, right here, it says temporary relief. Temporary is only based on the fact that it promises that the Commission is going to review this and make changes. I don't see that happening anytime soon, if at all, so--
Aspirin provides temporary relief. We need, you know, something more certain.
I would agree with that. And it really goes into saying, the reason we provided the relief is because these entities, which are once more sophisticated than, the utilities are more sophisticated than the general special entity, for one. And second, that there is a concern, which at the $25 million, which is the same concern we have at the $800 million that we've provided the relief to, that you do not have counterparties for these energy companies that are trading in regional markets. And we lay out in our first justification for providing the relief, there are not the adequate counterparties, and therefore, they're left, and they're still hostage to Wall Street banks.
Let me jump to the second line here on this question here. So have any entities registered with CFTC as a swap dealer for having exceeded the $25 million sub-threshold? Has anybody even taken part in that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Nor at the $800 that I'm aware of.
Do you think any more will be coming into place on that, under this $25 million rather than the $8 billion threshold?
I don't know. I'd go back to the staff and try to provide you some information.
Well, if you had to prognosticate how things have been going in that and what you think would happen.
I doubt it. I think they're fleeing this market to avoid this very issue of becoming registered as a swap dealer for trading with a special entity.
So with what the effects are on public power, then that means less options for people that are public power users, is it?
That's correct.
All right. Quickly, I'll try and get to a final line here. We're talking about technology a little bit ago, too. Does CFTC currently have the necessary technology to monitor massive amounts? Sounded like no, but at the beginning of the year, press reports indicated that an academic data sharing program run by the former chief economist may have resulted in proprietary data being disclosed in published academic papers. So with all this going on, with NSA and other issues out there, we have very great-- So with all this going on, with NSA and other issues out there, we have very grave concerns that how are people's data being treated and what's the security of that? Please answer briefly on that.
We have an IG investigation ongoing right now to uncover what happened or what went missing, but it's critical that we have policies and procedures, especially with regard to our markets as well as the international coordination, to make sure that we protect all market data.
Perhaps maybe too much data is being retrieved that can't possibly be managed. I'll yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen yield back. Gloria, five minutes. No questions. Phil Amman, you're it. No questions. Kristi Noem for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank both the commissioners for coming today. I wanted to thank you for your clarification on the hedging definitions because that has been a burr under our saddle for a while. And I'm curious, that is what I understand to be under the commission's authority, to come up with a uniformity in those definitions. Are you taking action in that manner?
Not in the manner and process that I'm satisfied with.
Okay. Well, if we in this committee can be helpful in that, that would certainly be a priority for me. Do you have a secure method that you both believe in on protecting the integrity of consumer and customer funds?
One of the important things that we were made aware of following the bankruptcy of both Peregrine and MF Global was there was not a technology solution in place that would surveil on a daily basis what the status of customer funds were, where they were and how they're being treated. We used the Technology Advisory Committee to respond immediately to that and we actually tasked the industry to come up with a industry-led and industry-funded solution. It didn't require a rulemaking. No taxpayer dollars have been expended for this. But the industry quickly responded and as of January this year, they've integrated a technology solution to double-check the accounts held at an FCM and double-check them against the custodian bank. And that makes sure that, and they have automated thresholds, that any deviation from that specific threshold will send a red flag. So customer funds will know when and if customer funds are being moved unexpectedly or illegally and then we will be able to respond to that more quickly. That was not in place. It is in place today and we're continuing to build that out to include not only the FCM and the custodian bank, but also carrying brokers and the CCPs, the clearinghouses. So we will have an electronic net that can really identify when and if customer funds are moving. We've also made some changes in our rules that we called the Corzine Rule, for example, that requires the CEO to sign off on any time they move a certain amount of money, which I think is a very important reform. And we will be addressing the proposed customer protection reforms coming up regarding FCM management, and we haven't seen that final rule yet, so we'll wait on that.
Okay. Commissioner Wiegand, did you have anything to add to that? Do you think it's an adequate safety net out there and available technology-wise?
Well, I appreciate the question. As Commissioner O'Malley said, a lot of changes have been made already on the part of the industry and some of those new practices are going to be reflected in our customer protection rule once it's finalized. So I think the system and the safeguards have improved even without our finalization of the customer protection rule. The one other thing we did right after I joined the commission was a rulemaking that limited the types of risky investments that FCMs could invest in or can invest customer funds in. And so I thought that was an appropriate reform at the time. So we do have one rule that has actually been finalized in response to some of the shortcomings in our previous regulatory structure. We need to get the rest of the way by finalizing the rule. As I said earlier in response to Congressman Maloney's question, I think, once we finalize the rule, we'll be in pretty good shape, but I would continue to worry that we don't know what we don't know. And so we'll just have to continue monitoring the practices of the FCMs. That's going to be much easier to do with some of the new requirements under the final rulemaking. First and foremost, the daily reporting of seg balances to the ESR and to the commission. So I think that'll be very important.
You know, another topic, is an insurance product a viable option for customers of futures trading?
That is a proposal that's been recommended by some. I think it's certainly worthy of consideration and exploration. One of the things we've heard from some is that folks need to get a handle on what the expense of providing the insurance would be. One of the trade associations has undertaken a study on that front, and so I think it would be important to understand what the cost would be. And it would be important because what we don't want to do is somehow saddle the FCMs with additional cost in a way that makes it more difficult for those who actually need to use our markets to hedge. We don't want to make it prohibitively expensive for them. So that would be counterproductive, and so I think that would be the issue to watch for when examining whether an insurance program has any viability.
We want to make sure that we instill the right corporate culture in the management of not only the FCM, but sometimes the larger entity, the family parent, and to make sure that the CEO and the financial officers all have customer interest first and foremost in mind. And I know one of the concerns with an insurance fund is that, don't worry about it, it's insured. We want corporate cultures to make sure that they protect customers, not rely on an insurance fund as a backup strategy. So I look forward to reviewing the study on the customer protection issue. I also want to pursue, and I put it in my testimony, different bankruptcy reforms that would really improve the customers' chances of being fully refunded if there's ever a bankruptcy or a hole in the funds, to take that all the way up through the corporate structure and really make management totally accountable for customer protection.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Gentlemen, you'll yield back. Mr. Hudson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Malley, I'm trying to understand the CFTC's final rulemaking on the de minimis level of swap dealing. Am I correct in reading that the level is set to automatically drop over 60% in five years without any public notice or comment?
Correct.
Would you agree that such a drastic change should warrant some time for public comment?
Yeah, that is a frustration. We've taken a number of automatic changes. Block rules, for example, require for swaps automatically rise from 50% to 67%. I proposed an amendment that at least the commission should evaluate and look at the data before we make any decision. My frustration lies with the de minimis rule as well. Making these automatic decisions totally devoid of any data makes no sense to me.
How exactly does the CFTC plan to evaluate what the de minimis level ought to be in five years? What kind of data? What's the process there?
Well, it would be, there's no requirement, obviously. The swap dealer rule is an automatic change. Mind you, the SEC did not agree to a similar, even though we were supposed to do a joint rulemaking. They did not have an automatic reduction in their standard. You know, we're going to benefit from having all of the swap data reported to swap data repository. It's really incumbent upon the commission to aggregate, understand and analyze that data, make its findings and then make decisions based on that. To skip that step doesn't make sense to me.
Well, and my understanding is it's based on notional value, but that may work for interest rate swaps, but you know, my concern is, you know, the commodities markets, you know, the rising energy prices could push entities over the threshold without them even changing their trading. In fact, entities might be forced to limit trading when faced with rising prices, reducing liquidity at exactly the wrong time. I mean, is the commission even taking that into consideration?
Not under this rule, it hasn't. I think those are very important questions you raise and concerns. And I think one of the real frustrations with the swap dealer rule is the four-part tests that provide for what is swap dealing, the commission did not define, and we use a facts and circumstances application. So there's a lot of uncertainty as to whether end users fall within the dealing definition. Congress gave us the tools in 149(c) of the rule to provide for an exemption for people who are not doing swap dealing as a part of their regular business. We completely ignored that and did not provide that coverage to end users. So they're left with this de minimis solution as their only protection against being a swap dealer. And that's unfortunate, especially in light of the fact that the number drops from $8 billion to $3 billion and all of a sudden, what was acceptable the day before could be found to be dealing the next day and many people have to register. So we have some time, obviously, before that, so I hope the commission will revisit it. It ought to revisit the special entity, so there's a couple of reasons why we ought to reopen the swap dealer definition.
Thank you for that. And I guess building on what my colleague, Mr. Almofa, was talking about, assuming the $800 million de minimis threshold has actually reduced the number of parties that a special entity may deal with, I mean, what regulatory benefit is gained by this limitation on a special entity's ability to offset risk? I'd open up to both of you. Mr. O'Malley, if you want to start.
Well, I think the promise we made in offering the exemptive relief for the staff no-action was because at $25 million, they weren't going to have enough counterparties. We raised it to $800 million, or the staff raised it to $800 million. They're still in the same problem, so we've just provided a solution that doesn't, or we've provided a solution that doesn't solve the problem. So either that number has to go up and I don't know why we would want to treat them any differently than any other end user for the purposes of a de minimis, or Congress ought to step in and change it.
Wiegand, if you'd like to respond, I've got a minute left.
Sure, Congressman. Thanks for the question. I think that experience has shown us that with regard to the special entity de minimis, the level was set too low. The level that it's currently set at through the no-action letter, $800 million, as you alluded to, was the number suggested by market participants. I think it was informed by the petition that was submitted by one of the trade groups that's seeking to change the definition. And the no-action letter does hinge on commission action on that petition, but in the meanwhile, the no-action is effective. I'm not aware of any particular reason why the no-action letter has not done the job in terms of providing the relief sought. There obviously is a difference between no-action relief and a full commission exemptive order or a commission rulemaking. I certainly can see that point, but I'm not aware that there's something peculiar about the fact that the relief has come through a no-action letter that it hasn't provided the relief sought. And so I'd have to learn more from the market participants who have sought the relief to understand that better. As far as where the level is set, again, it was informed by those impacted by the de minimis threshold in the first place. So if it needs to be a different number, we need to be open to that. But it was set based on information that was provided to us. And I agree with Commissioner O'Malley, whenever we can, we should always take commission action. And again, in this instance, no-action relief was provided because it was somewhat targeted in the sense that it was specific to a subset of these special entity groups. But I agree, if it's going to have the effect long-term of effectuating an entirely different policy than what was in the swap dealer rule, that's something the commission should reexamine.
Well, our time's expired. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I think we definitely need to provide more certainty than a no-action letter, and so I hope this committee will work towards that, working with the commission. I yield back.
Gentlemen's time expired previously, but he yields back anyway. Ms. Hartstern for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen. I've been hearing a lot about an issue that directly impacts the folks back home with some of the rules that have been proposed. We've heard from farmers and ranchers and small to medium-sized future commission merchants strongly opposing the CFTC's proposed rules that were supposedly designed to improve customer protections. Instead, many of them say the new proposals would profoundly increase their costs and potentially threaten their existence. If the proposed rules are implemented as currently drafted, FCMs must hold enough of their own funds to cover all customer positions at all times of the day, in addition to the farmers and ranchers now having to meet just a one-day margin call. So if this happens, what will happen to the agriculture segment of the futures markets, both from the FCM and from the customer standpoint?
Congressman, I appreciate the question. You're referring to the residual interest provision in our customer protection rulemaking that has not been finalized, and it is true that the proposal would have had an effect consistent with what you said. The staff is preparing a draft and will recommend a different approach on this particular issue, as I understand it, based on our internal dialogues. I think, again, we have to find a balance. The statute does require that customer seg funds should be protected at all times and shouldn't be covered by some other customers' funds. And so that's an important principle we need to have reflected in our rulemakings. But by the same token, what was originally proposed was such a dramatic change from the current practice. We started to hear the same concern that you just raised, which was that many FCMs wouldn't be able to handle that additional expense and might very well go out of business. And these tend to be the ones that provide services to the hedgers back in places like Iowa, where I'm from, and back in your district. So I'm eager to take a look at what the staff recommends and to ensure that it finds the right balance.
I share your concerns. I think I share the same concerns that Commissioner Wiegand does. It's a balance and we have to be very careful with this. We do not want to put these FCMs in a position that they can't serve their customers or the customers can't afford to hedge their risk. So I haven't received the same staff briefing and with the commitment that they're coming up with a different approach, so I'll carefully evaluate it when it comes before the commission, but this is a top priority for that rule. So thank you for the question.
You bet. I'm from Missouri, mainly rural district, and so this is important to us, and I'm just curious about the draft. Now, was it dealing with the FCM's requirements or was it dealing with the farmer's one-day margin? Or both?
Well, I think the rule changes the way FCMs hold the money and therefore the commitments. It changes the interpretation of what we'd historically been relying on in the past and that would change how much farmers and ranchers would have to put up to meet that demand and reduces the FCM's flexibility to extend the credit to their customers.
Yeah, I would agree with that and say a little bit differently. You know, where we land will have to be informed by how quickly the FCM can actually collect additional margin from a customer and how quickly margin is provided by some users is different from how much time it takes with others. And again, we'll have to make sure the proper balance is struck in the final rule.
I'm encouraged to hear that you're listening and trying to weigh in because the average farmer relies on their local FCM and I would hate to see the rule so onerous that it puts them out of business or makes it too difficult for the local farmer to be able to hedge their risk, because that's a very big part of their marketing plan. So thank you for your response and I yield back.
Gentlemen, you'll back. Recognize myself for five. We'll have a second round, since we have a little bit of time left to do that. Playing off of what Vic is just talking about, I think the Agriculture Advisory Council or committee meets tomorrow for the first time in two and a half years, a pretty tumultuous time during the commission's existence, and I'm concerned that having, the ag community not having had access to the commission directly during that timeframe may have missed the opportunity to hear some of these concerns that Vic and I hear from the folks. So given, maybe both of your nuances are really cranked up, what's your expectation as to what the Agricultural Advisory Committee can do with respect to advising the commission on the impact that the proposed rulemaking will have? Mark, you want to start off?
You bet, Mr. Chairman. Oftentimes, we might hear more often from certain segments of the marketplace than others, and so I think the main importance of this Agriculture Advisory Committee is to make sure that the commission is being informed by the perspective of that community when we adopt policies at the agency. I think through our rulemakings under Dodd-Frank, for example, we've received literally tens of thousands of comment letters, and I think a lot of those have come from groups representing the ag interests. So I do feel like we've received a lot of input, valuable input from that community, but I think this would be a good forum to make sure that we're especially focused on their interests.
Obviously, the advisory committee has the potential to be a very useful tool for the commission to discuss issues that are not immediately fore and think about other different issues affecting that industry. So I remain optimistic. We've used the Technology Advisory Committee quite effectively to talk about customer protection, talk about high-frequency trading, talk about risk mitigation tools. So they're important tools. I just hope that this is as effective as that.
Speaking of advice, it seems to me that the self-regulatory agencies who drove the daily bank confirmation process really got to the heart of the customer protection issue. And will that effort be reflected in the final rulemaking with respect to customer protection? Because if, in fact, your new rule drives greater customer balances at the FCM, aren't you exposing them to greater risks for loss of those dollars if what you're doing? And so, you know, how much is enough? And I'm hopeful that you'll be able to fold that in. You both have spoken about the opportunity- You both have spoken about the opportunity that data, data collection, and that it plays a great role in the regulatory scheme and that you'll be able to fair it out, all kinds of stuff. Can you talk to us why that didn't work in the whale, JP Morgan, I mean, whale deal from last summer, why we've not been able to fair that out at this point? Why did the data collection oversight potential not work?
Data is a very, requires very rigorous and disciplined rules and kind of policies. We have to be very prescriptive with requiring what data to be reported and when. And I think we have, we weren't adequately prescriptive. Ironically, that I'm talking about how the commission failed not to be prescriptive, which is generally not the case with most of its rules. But in terms of data, it's a very granular requirement. You have to be very specific about how people report. And I think right now, we're not getting the consistency and uniformity that allows us to do the essential aggregation. If you can't line up the columns and you're not looking at the same data from the same people consistently, you won't get the right answers.
Is that, does that strike to the heart of this, most of what we're trying to do? Is that we want, you know, all this data collected in the swap data repositories and throughout the system in order to be able to quote-unquote "see where the bad actor is" or the systemic risk to the financial system would lie? Are we no closer to making that happen?
Well, we are making marginal progress, but we are making steady progress, and we've convened a working group to really address this. And we're going back to first-order fundamentals to make sure that we work with the SDRs to identify this. The other thing that's causing some problems with the data is actually the no-action process. When there is a gap in the data, when somebody doesn't have to report for an entity or an activity that we've exempted, we won't be able to see that in the data.
Yeah. Scott, with a relook at data requirement, data collection requirements, where you have the potential to shed certain data you've been collecting in the past is not useful as you look at, what should you be collecting in order to monitor the market?
Well, I think we've taken a more prioritized approach. I still think we have a, we want it all, we want it now attitude, but I think we're beginning to figure out that in order to swallow this issue, we're going to have to take it in bites, and we're starting to focus on getting elements right and focusing and building from there. But it's going to take a very long time to get this completely correct.
Mr. Scott, next to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me go back to my line of questioning, because after all, the purpose, one of the major purposes of this hearing is for the reauthorization and your budget and appropriations. I want to follow up on that. The House Appropriations Committee reported an appropriation bill that reduces your funding for the CFTC by more than $10 million below what we talked about earlier, what you needed. Chairman Gensler was at that meeting, and he testified, and I think, Mr. O'Malley, you were there as well, that even at current spending levels with sequestration, that the CFTC would likely face furloughs, would very likely face reductions in force. And all that we've talked about here at this meeting shows this increased load. So do you believe that this cut by the Appropriations Committee is justified? And if so, which areas of the CFTC would you assign for furloughs?
That's a very good question, and it's a difficult one, obviously, because it strikes at the heart of kind of how we function. But the House level is where we are today. So they have, while it is off of the 2013 appropriated level, it is at our current operating level of the sequestration. Now, we had the opportunity with using carryover balances, the Appropriations Committee was kind to give us two-year money, which is essential, because that gives us some flexibility to husband resources as necessary to take and work through some of the difficult times. We were able to use a $6 million carryover balance this year alone to make sure that we did not have furloughs or layoffs at all. So we have yet been unaffected, but as time goes by, we may not have those carryover balances. We need to be very prudent with the management of our funds to make sure and protect our staff resources that we have today and not get into a position that we have furloughs in the future. I had to dissent against a spend plan recently that would set that out, and it did, in that document, it did say that there is a chance that we would have some furloughs as a result of the budget.
Going forward, you know, in Europe, in which you will be playing a far more intricate role, over in Europe, there's talk about what they refer to as transaction taxes. You may be familiar with. And some here in the United States, in view of these budget shoffles, if you're not able to get the money that you need, have called for some kind of user fee or transaction fee to help finance the commission's activities. What are your thoughts on that proposal? And would they be any different at all from what Europe is offering? And quite honestly, should we go that way? I mean, we're the leader here of the world. I value that. I think it's very important for us to sustain that. So I'm concerned very much about your funding capacity. What would it mean if you're forced to have to go the way that these Europeans are talking about and come up with some transaction fees if we here in Congress don't give you the level of money you need?
I think that's a great question. I think it's being, it's a very contested issue in Europe right now, as you correctly pointed out. It is, it's very controversial. This year in the president's budget, the president, the OMB proposed a fee to be collected, but it had no specifics as to how that fee would be assessed on our industry to recover these costs. I have no idea if it's a, I believe it says it's a full recovery of costs, but I know OMB has not provided it to you in terms of requesting authorization to impose a fee. So they proposed the budget, it did not assume it in its baseline, but it did talk about their desire to have one. You should receive that information. I have not seen the information. I don't know how they were going to propose to collect this information or the funds. I don't know who it's going to be assessed on. And I would want to make sure that we understand what the ramifications of this is before we implement it, and I don't have a position on it because I don't know what the proposal says. We do rely, to some extent, a very small amount, on the National Futures Association. They recover costs through their member registrations that are under our jurisdiction, and they provide a very valuable resource to the commission. Their challenge has been to take taxing a futures trade versus a swaps trade, but they handle that at two cents per side. It amounts to roughly 20% of the futures trades due to several exemptions in there. And then swap dealers are assessed on membership fee, and the largest members pay $1 million, the smallest members pay as low as $150,000. So there is a range, and we are using that. And members actually receive direct benefit from that. They receive the recovery of those costs in those services.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Costa, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This hearing today, of which I missed the earlier part of it, but is a continuation of other hearings that we've had. And I think the overall descriptive for me is that this continues to be a work in progress as we deal with the implementation of the efforts that are assigned under your responsibility. Tell me, as you look down the road here over the next five years, what your expectations are in terms of the implementation and the regulatory process under the most optimistic scenario? And what are your greatest fears under a most difficult five-year journey in terms of what you wake up in the middle of the night wondering, you know, under what set of scenarios, i.e. a repeat of a 2008 crash, on how you might respond?
Congressman, I appreciate the question. First, I would answer by saying we have, we do have a little bit of work left to do, as you know. I think--
That's my descriptive of work in progress.
I think, I think one of the key areas of focus for the agency will be on these substituted compliance determinations, where we take a look at regulatory regimes in other nations and determine whether they're comparable and comprehensive or essentially identical.
To that end, are you working with our European allies?
Yeah, in fact, the determinations have effectively been made with regard to Europe. There's an agreement struck two weeks ago reflecting that. But the key will be looking at some of these other jurisdictions like Australia, Switzerland, the UK, or, excuse me, Hong Kong, Japan, and then some of the other jurisdictions--
Do you think transparency is there with those other countries?
I'm sorry?
Do you believe the transparency is there with those other countries?
Well, the ones I mentioned, I think, I think those are the ones that we expect to find to be closest.
Right.
But again, there's swap activity taking place outside of those jurisdictions as well.
Clearly.
And so we've, we've taken an approach in our guidance to deal with those other jurisdictions, but we need to make sure that we're collecting data and understanding what's happening in those jurisdictions as well. So that's probably the one area of focus, I think, for the commission over the next three to five years, in addition to just finishing the other remaining rulemakings under Title VII.
I think that's a very, the way Commissioner Wiegand answered, over the next five years, that will be the substitute compliance determination. Coordination internationally will be paramount, and we're going to spend a lot more time dealing internationally and to make sure that we have good rules that harmonize our rules but, and don't create a competitive imbalance. And one of the areas I think we need to be very focused on is in the transaction space. Our requirements for SEF rules--
And the transaction space, is that where you think you've got to monitor in a way to not create a competitive disadvantage?
Well, I don't know at this point. I think that's where we have probably the greatest differences in regulatory structures internationally, and I think that's an area where trades can move easiestly, easiest internationally. They can move trades to different platforms.
How do you see the clearinghouses in Europe?
I think we have very close comparability in terms of clearinghouses and recognize the European clearinghouses, Asian clearinghouses. I think we're much closer in those regards. We've done a lot of work through IOSCO, and the international regulatory and prudential regulators have ensured that we do have systemically relevant entities that are going to be closely harmonized. And I think, but I think the transaction space is going to be a little more Wild West, and there's going to be a variety of different trading venues, platforms, and requirements. And I think that's going to be something we need to focus on.
With that thought in mind, I'm going to give you the proverbial softball down the middle of the plate. So what do you think is the appropriate role for oversight by the Congress as you're trying to do your job?
I would encourage careful and immediate oversight, actually, and really bring closer evaluation to how our rules are being implemented. I think you can start with some of the definitional rules and certainly entity rules like swap dealer definition. We've had a lot of discussion about how our end users are faring under this. So I think there's some real examples of how this is making a lot of entities' life a challenge, hedging definitions, et cetera, that I've raised earlier. And I also think that Congress should really focus on expanding and changing some of the bankruptcy rules to really help in terms of protecting customer funds.
Thank you. My time has expired.
Gentlemen yields back. Mr. Moffin, five minutes.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I want to come back to the no-action letters and some of the frustration, you know, among market participants about how they come about and their timing, et cetera. You know, as we talked about earlier a little bit, they can come at the 11th hour while people are tracking on maybe two entirely different tracks, anticipating scenarios with or without one. Could you explain, please, how the commission's standards work for issuing a no-action letter and who determines what entity or activity might receive such relief and whether or not the commission itself is the one that votes on approving its issuance?
Well, the no-action process, since I've been there, has been an evolving one. I think historically, the commission has had a greater say, and there has been some sort of, they circulate the no-action relief, which is really a, generally, an entity petitions the commission and says, we have a unique situation, we would like some very narrow relief. And we have used that over the years to provide that narrow relief to specific entities. And it's done, the staff will take, evaluate it, make its recommendation, and then provide the no-action letter, circulate it to the commission for review. But as we now know, that is not a commission action, and it's a staff action. So the commission does not have a vote on that. And therefore, it's a challenge, because if you use it broadly, and I think we've used it and abused it frankly in kind of covering some of our faults in Dodd-Frank rulemaking, and if you use it indefinitely, it becomes a de facto rulemaking, which is certainly the purview of the commission. And they are now substituting staff decisions for commission decisions without the benefit of notice and comment, without having it be put in the federal register for everybody to review. It's a letter sent, and it just generally appears on our website. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not added to the code of regulations that we have, so you can't go to one spot to figure out if you're in compliance or not, because you have to check our website to see if there's any no-action relief on it.
How many no-action letters, you think, over the last year have been issued, do you think?
I think in relation to Dodd-Frank, I tried counting them. I think we're a little over 100, and in 24 of those, it's my understanding, we've provided indefinite relief, meaning unlimited or permanent.
And so you mentioned, too, it's kind of de facto for commission rulemaking. What would be a better system for replacing that so that the commission actually is doing the rulemaking instead of this gray zone we have, this really unpredictable situation you have, especially 11th-hour decisions? How could we make that better?
Well, it's certainly, no-action relief is a vital tool for us to provide that targeted relief, and I think we should use it for targeted, specific, and on a limited basis. When we have an issue where we are considering permanent relief or indefinite relief or something like that, then the commission should revisit the rule. We should open up the rule and say, we have an issue here that needs to be corrected. Go through the proper process to make those narrow, those rule changes. And we're beginning to rack up a few proposals that were, it's now appropriate to come back and reevaluate the rule. If I had a nickel for every time we have said at an open meeting, oh, we're going to come back to fix these rules if they're broken, I'd be a rich man, because we've always committed to that, yet we've never done it. And that's my frustration--
Because you're probably starting to build a pattern of maybe very often requests for a particular type of relief, right? So this would maybe be a rule that you might put at the top of the list to come back on?
The issue is that special entity issue. The headline of that no-action relief is temporary relief. What's temporary about it? It says the commission's reviewing the petition. Nothing's happening at the commission to review that petition. I don't see any action happening to fix the rule, to fix this problem. And the no-action solution has turned into a no-fix of the problem either, and that doesn't make sense to me either.
Does Congress need to have a greater role, kind of dovetailing on what Mr. Costa was asking, in oversight or even legislatively?
You have the exact same role you did when Dodd-Frank was formed. You don't need any additional authority, but I would suggest you, if we're not going to fix it, you should.
Yeah, thank you. I yield back.
Gentlemen yields back. I brought up the issue a little ago of self-regulatory organizations. Is there a way for the commission to offload some of its responsibilities given the budgetary concerns that my colleagues have talked about? Some of the regulation to the SROs with the commission then maintaining a role of supervising that or making sure the SROs do it correctly?
This goes directly to Mr. Scott's concerns about budgeting. We do have a useful tool, as we talked about, the NFA, for example, charges its participants. Its budget is $74 million, I think, in 2014, so it's, they're able to do a lot of the registration responsibilities. They're going to play a vital role in our SEF regulation. These are the swap execution facilities, these transactions. They are testing, reviewing the order book, and looking at all of the SEFs for compliance and to make sure that they do their market surveillance tool. Great opportunity to leverage our resources with that, and they've been a great resource for us in the past. The swap dealer rule in and of itself, so far, the NFA has received 168,000 pages of swap dealer submissions. It makes no sense to me for them to go through all of the swap dealer rules and all of these 168,000 pages of submissions and then have the commission do the exact same review. We need to work together. We need to do a sampling. We need to figure out what their responsibilities and our responsibilities are. We certainly can't afford to do both.
You can see an opportunity for the SRO to do it first, and then you come back in and take the, pick the ones that present the most risks or, you know, some sort of random deal and go through that, depending on what you discover-- random deal and go through that, depending on what you discover there. Go with what the SRO do or go further. But rather than duplicate of effort, isn't that a better way to go?
I fully support that concept, and we really need to figure out how we're going to leverage that as a tool and not duplicate it.
Yeah. I do think there's a role there. The SROs are more nimble, as you've seen with their really elegant fix on customer funds protection by going right to the banks and having that happen. That went a lot quicker than I suspect the Commission could have done it. And it's actually very effective. And to me, it looks maybe effective enough that you can look at your proposed fixes on customer protection and maybe leverage that one better. On the path forward, the CFTC and the European Commission agreed to, say, we're going to agree to agree. You didn't agree on margins for exchange-traded derivatives. If at the end of the day, you decide US has one marginal level, EU has a different marginal level, what impact does that have on customers?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Chairman. I do think that, at the end of the day, even though you're right in the document that was released, the document addressed this issue, but effectively punted on it. I expect that the Europeans will find our clearing regime comparable to theirs. I would imagine that we will do the same, although we do have most of the European clearinghouses either registered with us or in the process of registering with us. So, that solves a lot of the problem there. And then, I think once comparability is determined, then we have to leave it up to the market participants to decide, even if it means that in one clearinghouse, there's larger, more additional margin requirements vis-à-vis another. What we have to, I think, keep an eye out for is, while we want participants to have choice in that way, we want to make sure that there isn't the sorts of arbitrages taking place that would invite risk to our system, because in this case, we actually have a smaller margin requirement. So, we'd want to keep an eye out for that. But based on initial dialogues between ESMA and Europe and the staff at the CFTC, it feels to me like we're trending towards a conclusion where equivalency or substitute compliance is going to be found.
All right. Anyone else have another question? Mr. Vargas, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it, appreciate again the witnesses being here. You know, the question was asked by Mr. Maloney, "What keeps you up at night?" And you said your three-year-old, if your three-year-old's keeping you up, you're doing something wrong, only by one year, and then after that, they shouldn't be keeping you up. I have two girls, I can tell you. But anyway, Mr. Costa said, "What worries you in the middle of the night?" And I guess I thought about that. And for my district, it's an interesting district, because about two-thirds of the district is a very urban area in San Diego, and the other part of my district is a very farming, very rural farming community. And for them, it's the issue of manipulation of some commodities like gasoline. In California, back in the early 2000s, we had manipulation electrical system there, and our prices spiked two, three times what they were regularly. And I went back and took a look at the price of gasoline here, and this is the weekly U.S. conventional retail gasoline, retail prices since 2000. In 2000, both premium and regular was under $1.50, and today, they're $3.82 and $3.50 for premium and regular. And I think that is one of the things that worries people in my district, you know, what has happened to the price of gas? And there are economists and academics that are saying it's manipulation, it's speculative manipulation, very similar to that. I don't know that that's true. Now, you said that there's this process that you go through, but how would you find that? When you're having these meetings, how would you determine that there is manipulation, speculation? Because really, that's what Dodd-Frank ultimately is supposed to do, is where the rubber hits the road, is where the regular American is saying, "Wait a minute, I'm getting ripped off here. I'm paying way too much, and this is not market forces. This is manipulation. This is speculation. This is something that's wrong and fraudulent." How in fact do you find it there? Because I know that that is an issue that comes up in California, the price of gas and this radical, radical increases that we've seen.
This is not, this is an issue that we're very attuned to based on the California energy crisis. And obviously, in 2007, a lot of commodities saw their prices spike and fall. And in 2007, and they've remained more moderate, but we have to be vigilant, absolutely have to be vigilant on this point. And we have to work with not only our surveillance teams, which are really growing in capacity, and I'm very impressed. One area that I think we're really improving is our ability to analyze the data. It's not so much the new data, but it is, we're really expanding our capacity. And I give a lot of credit to our new Office of Surveillance Director, Matt Hunter, for his efforts to retool our teams to really become more data-intensive and to do a lot more modeling. So, I think we're making huge improvements there. We also work with the EIA, the Energy Information Agency, which really looks at physical stores and making sure we understand how the physical markets are behaving, storage issues, supply and demand. And those are vital issues to make sure that we're looking, when we look at something, are we looking at a supply and demand issue or are we looking at a manipulation issue? And then, some of the other things, we work with the FTC, the Federal Trade Commission, things like gasoline prices. They've investigated gasoline issues over the years, on and off, and try to figure out why the price of gasoline, why does it go up faster than it comes down, for example? And they haven't. So, we work with all of these entities, including FERC, by the way, in electricity issues as well. So, we put that together. Our mandate is to make sure that we don't have fraud manipulation in our market, and we figure out if there is somebody doing that, how do we go about it? In Dodd-Frank, we have new manipulation authority that really makes our job easier in terms of pursuing a perfected manipulation and pursuing a case. Congress gave us the recklessness authority, which effectively lowers the bar for us in terms of proving manipulation. Recently, we've also had new disruptive trade practices, and we recently prosecuted the other day, or at least come to a settlement with a high-frequency trader who is using spoofing. That was the first time we ever used our spoofing authority that was given to us under Dodd-Frank. In addition, the Farm Bill in '09, I believe, I think we've also raised the penalty for manipulation to $1 million per violation. So, we have a number of tools in our toolbox today. Congress has given us easier authority to prosecute these things. And then, the other big issue is going to be data. We're now going to have the ability eventually to look at the swaps data, so we can, you know, work with our physical partners to look at physical market data, EIA, supply and demand data. We're going to have swaps data, so that market is no longer going to be dark to our Commission. We need to make sure that we understand that, how physical market trades and the interaction between financial markets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Yales back. Mr. Scott for a closing statement.
Well, ladies, I think this has been a very informative session. And you both handled your testimony in a very intelligent, knowledgeable way. It has provided us with tremendous insight. You do an extraordinary job. You've taken on an extraordinary situation. And as I mentioned before, it's important to note, a great commendation to your staff, who's had to work overtime, as I said. You've not had a reauthorization since before Dodd-Frank, since before the financial crisis. A lot has been thrown at you. It's very important that you have the staffing, as I've reiterated in my line of questioning. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for the great service that you're providing to our nation.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, and I would echo those compliments. Thank you both for being here. In the boxing world, it doesn't appear we laid a glove on either one of you in this morning's exchanges. Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you for your staff and their hard work. And, you know, we berate you when something goes wrong, we don't brag on you enough when you get it right. I appreciate both of your very open attitude toward exchange of ideas, different perhaps than what you hold yourself, but you're open to listening to us, and I hope we're as adept at listening to you as well. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 consecutive, or excuse me, 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplement written responses from the witness to any question posed by a member. This hearing on the subcommittee of general foreign commodities risk management is adjourned.